Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Roosevelt City Meeting. We're looking forward to it. We appreciate everyone being here tonight. As far as the whole call goes, we're psyched everyone's here tonight. Appreciate all the council making an effort to keep here. To begin, we've asked Councilman Bozenbar to give us an opening prayer. And then, following the prayer, we'll recite the treatise in this.
Our dear Heavenly Father, we're grateful to meet as residents of Roosevelt City and as a city council. We're grateful for this city we live in and the residents that live therein. We're grateful for the opportunity we have to meet as a council and discuss the needs of the citizens of Roosevelt City and hope and pray that we'll be inspired to do those things that will be in the best interest of the residents, that we can be good stewards of the tax money that was provided to help run the programs in the city and hope and pray that we'll continue to be able to promote and to have those programs for the residents of Roosevelt City. We're grateful for this land we live in and the freedoms we enjoy and hope and pray that we'll always have those freedoms. We're grateful to thee in our many blessings, my sister and my son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and infinite.
Thank you. At this time, we have been minutes to approve. If anyone has any amendments or corrections, those minutes.
I move we approve them.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman White, calling favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Unanimous. We have our public comment buried at this time. Is there anyone that would like to take an opportunity to address the council? You can take up to three minutes if you'd like. And we'd ask you to stand and speak into the mic here and let us know your name. And I think that's all we need for the record. So, let's see.
Can I use the microphone?
Yes, I'm sorry. It's a recording.
Might I call them?
If you will.
I mean, I don't want to talk to you guys. I don't see our police officer in our place of chief. Nobody? Okay, just one over there. All right, there we go. This is to you. We've been being hit with a series of robberies and we recorded it. And all of a sudden, we see cops holding our street all the time. Thank you. Thank you. We're working on correcting it with security lights and stuff, but in the meantime, it's nice to know you're there. So, thanks.
Well, thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
My practice card here. It's basically a question on the, what are it, curb cutters and stuff like that in front of our home. Who's responsible? Is that our responsibility to maintain those?
Where do you mean?
Well, we got two addresses from the town.
100 West, 100 South.
Yeah, that's your responsibility on that street. No, I'm just kidding. I think, 100 West, 100 South. This is one I think I may have mentioned to Kirby earlier today. And so, that's something that we're looking at how, getting in the works and how quickly we can, but that is the curbing gutter is Roosevelt City's responsibility.
Thanks, no problem. Forcing you in there. Love it or not.
Well, and I did mention that to him. I had somebody else approach me during the week, after last week, and so I mentioned it to him this morning in the department head meeting. And we're gonna make sure we get that on the schedule to get done. I don't know when, but at least we'll get it set. And maybe next year, may not, but at least we'll have, we'll start to get funding for that and set aside money for that street because it is.
There's two issues here. One is the street on 100 South. The curbing gutter that's an issue is 100 West.
Okay.
And there's places where the curb is this much different, you know, between sections.
We'll look at that as well.
Okay.
It's in a very close proximity to that other, so I think we can just do.
We, we do have, if you wanna turn in work order for us to look at it, if it's a bad enough situation, there's so much a year throughout the whole town we do, we budget for.
Right.
You know, and if it's a big hazard, we can, if I have the money, I can get on it, you know, immediately. So, at least let us know, call it in, have us come by and look at it, you know, and then I can evaluate it and we can go from there.
Yeah, because it is getting very dangerous. They fill with two inches of height, your eyes. And if you step wrong, you're gonna twist your ankle just because of the difference in height.
So, understood. Yeah, so if you just leave your address, you did your name, and now that we have that, I'll look at that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to take an opportunity? Taylor? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on. With the next part of our meeting, we have public hearings tonight. First being the animal shelter fee schedule. This was presented last meeting by, I don't know, you're over the animal shelter, but I don't know your official position, but by Rose Potts. And she presented to us, and she's been taking care of the animal shelter. She's been doing a really good job. She presented some fees to the council for consideration. We decided to move it to a public hearing. Any fee, even though our fees are in resolution, these are considered a tax. We wanna make sure that we have public hearings anytime we adjust those. We learned our lesson once, so we won't do that again. But are there any questions, any additional information that you'd like to comment to Rose or Travis or anything?
I'll just hear if anybody has any questions on it or anything like that.
Okay. Now, did these fees show what it was and what we wanted to go to?
No, this is just the new one. The only thing that changed from the last was the trap deposit and then the barn cat adoption. That's the only things that changed from the last time I presented.
All right, but this is just the proposal. This isn't what our current rates are.
Yeah.
All right, do you have any questions or comments?
On, on the trap, we, didn't we decide whatever the cost of the trap was?
Yeah, so I believe I did it as $30 because that's what we would pay at Tractor Supply, which is where we would go. So, I just upped it to 30 rather than 40.
And so, they would come in and pay the money, and if they brought the trap back, they'd be able to.
And we refund them, yeah. So, as long as they bring the trap back, they get their money back.
And just to give the public, because we don't have the numbers, the current numbers, to give you an idea of what we've done. So, we raised our rates for everything, hoping to offset a lot of our costs. What that's really done is it's, it's discouraged people from coming and picking up animals or anything like that. So, our shelters becoming overwhelmed with animals. So, we're going the other direction and we're, and we're lowering those rates and everything to hopefully incentivize people to adopt. We're gonna try that for a bit while and see how that works. And so, these, these rates basically reflect that. So, as far as impound fees, as far as adoption fees and those types of things. What are they called when they bring the dog and?
A surrender fee.
A surrender fee. We lower those fees and try to get them to a spot where we feel like it'll incentivize people to adopt animals and see if we can get moving animals out of our shelters, so they're not staying there very long. If they stay there, where we are trying to be a no-kill shelter, it really costs them. There's a lot longer they're in that facility. So, if we can lower our fees, get them out quick, we're hoping to ultimately save good tax payer money that way. So, we're gonna try it and see how it works. And Rose has put in a lot of thought on this. These numbers and things were also in a packet that was available to the public during the past week. With that being said, have there any other comments?
I just wanna refresh my memory on the, so after the second impound, they are required to neuter or spay their dog.
Yeah.
The deposit for that, it's $40 is the deposit. That's just a deposit to get the ball rolling, but eventually they'll have to pay the rest of that.
So, kind of how that works is the deposit, as soon as they show us that animal has been spayed or neutered, they can be refunded, the deposit. Per se, they're a breeder. They just pay that deposit in Utah code that the second time they come in to help reduce the times they come in, because a lot of the times, if they're a repeat, I don't wanna say offender, but they're a repeat offender, it's because they're not spayed or neutered because they're out searching for meat. So, that's kind of the reason it's in place with the Utah code. So, we just brought that to 40. It hasn't been done in the past. So, we would like to make sure we're up to go from that.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to go into public hearing already?
Yeah, if the council doesn't have any other comment or questions, then entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
I'll move to go to public hearing to discuss. Can we do both or do you have to do them separately?
We do them separately.
Okay, so I'll move, I move that we go into public hearing to discuss the animal shelter fee schedule.
Okay, do we have a second? Second by Councilman Hancock, calling favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll consider ourselves in a public hearing and would entertain any public, or any comment from the public if you so choose on this matter in this second round. Seeing no comment, would entertain a motion to go back into regular session.
So moved.
Second by Councilman White, calling favor.
Aye.
All right, we'll consider ourselves back in regular session. Any further discussion?
No, I move we accept the changes to the animal shelter fee schedule. Would, I would like a report maybe in a year just to see kind of what, how it happened or, you know, what occurred or, you know.
Yeah, what impacted it.
Yeah, you know, the impact it had, I think, would be good for us so we can evaluate that. I don't know.
I'll do six months and then six months.
Six months might be, yeah, six months would be good. Is that all right, Rose?
Yeah, the only issue I would see is sometimes winter hours are a little bit slower and summer hours are a little bit more. So, we could do a six-month and a yearly one, just to make sure we're getting accurate records.
Okay, that's my motion. I'd like to, I'd like to, I just wanna make sure we're evaluating as we go through this process.
Do we have a motion on the table? Second by Councilman Allen, calling favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We'll see how it works.
Thanks for all your work, Rose. That was awesome.
Thank you.
Next item is a budget, budget amendment, this is for year 2022. Run that.
Okay, so you should have before you, there are several sheets, but this one says this is for year 22, budget, proposed changes. We're gonna start at the back on page two and work our way forward. There are only four changes that we are bringing to you and requesting for tonight. The first one involves some really good news. And we are increasing the intergovernmental revenues there because of the grant that we received for our innovation hub. We got the full grant that we were requesting. And so, it's $229,000, $229,800. And so, we are, that, that is put in here as well as $25,000 that we would like to look at obtaining a kiosk of some sort so that people can pay their bills with contactless, even maybe off-hours or whatever, if they, you know, get into the corridor or whatever. We've looked into one in particular. I spent quite a bit of time talking with the salesman and it isn't going to work for some technical reasons, but I'm hopeful that we can find something that can interface with what we have and maybe a little streamline things a little bit more with people, make it a little easier for people to come in and pay. And so, that, that was, what was on that page, going back to page one, if you, the $25,000 that we're asking for from the ARCA down below is also for that kiosk. So, we're just looking to move that from, from the ARCA funds into the capital expenditure if we can find a kiosk that'll work. And then, in the general fund, there are two different line items that we're requesting an increase for. And the first one is under Parks, Recs and Public Property, and it's for the Aquatic Center. And they have lights that need to be replaced and they need $9,000 to replace the lights that are out. Now, if you have questions about that, I'd ask everyone to join us here tonight because all I know about these lights, but.
Can you tell us why we need lights?
What do you have to say? They are, they're LED and there's some drivers. There's, I think it's just with the heat in the room. We're looking to see if we can find ways to, down the road, add a cooling option for the unit so that we could cool the air in the indoor pool. They, they think that's the reason the lights are frying. I bet.
Sorry, George.
Are any of you asking right now?
They are LED lights. They are two different kinds. There's a can light that faces down towards the pool. Then they have some lights that help get more light in the room that face up to the ceiling. If you remember seeing those in the building. The reason why I can tell it's not just the lights themselves that are bad is they're two completely different brands, two completely different manufacturers. So, it's telling me that there's something else happening that's causing those lights to fry. And that's what my assumption is would have to be heat, you know, with the unit only heats or takes in the outside air. Then, in the middle of the summer, you know, you're drawn in high 90s, low 100s into that room, and that could be frying the drivers and those lights themselves, so. And that's something I'd like to look into down the road to see if we can find a way to do so.
That's in the mechanical room?
This is in the indoor pool.
Oh, in the indoor.
All of the north can lights minus, I think, one, two are now out, face down towards the deck.
Gotcha. And you just wanna replace the bulbs? Or are you looking to replace the unit?
So, the can lights, you have to replace the whole unit. They are frying. But what's nice is the more expensive, bigger units that face the ceiling, it's just the drivers is our assumption. And the drivers are 50, maybe 50, $75 each. And then you gotta get gaskets and we see on, so those are the cheaper ones. The cans run close to $1,000 each, face down to the deck.
I'm just gonna give them, but as far as LED lights, they're pretty efficient, but they transform themselves with the drivers' ability.
Right.
And, and so, that's probably what's helping them burn out. And nine times out of 10 LEDs, I know with the school district and everything they put them in, it's almost as cheap to replace the entire unit rather than just parts. On some way look at, but just, I didn't know if y'all knew that the drivers themselves, they actually get quite warm.
Yeah, and I realize I have a similar problem because I've insulated so well in the building down there. All of those LEDs that I put in are, they go out pretty quickly just because of the heat, like especially in the back. They're painting more in the back because we don't have cooling in the back. There, and you're looking in a way, maybe.
There might be a way to also find, it's our air handling unit. I think there's a way we can cool it too. You know, something I was told we would try to look into where we can afford that down the road. We're wanting to try to take care of now so it's not so dark on the way to the pool. But yes, that is something we'll be adding to if I have your opinion as our focus for that. So, they haven't all been going out altogether, which is why we feel like we could get by replacing lights now and then work on that air handling unit in the next couple of years, so.
I was just joking about the comment about the light earlier, but I have no problem with the person who did the lights. Obviously, we need them. If there's something else we need to fix to make sure that they last longer in the future, then now that's definitely get that fixed too.
Did this happen with higher frequency during the supply chain issue with the AC unit during the summer?
So, that AC unit, a good question. So, that only takes care of the lobby, offices, locker rooms, hard rooms and first aid rooms. That indoor pool has its own massive unit that takes care of its own ventilating, so. But good question, it's from a different unit for that, that connection came from, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Brambleman or Rhonda? Are those all the changes? There's one more.
There's one more. And I will have Josh come up. Under general government, there is an increase that we're requesting for $15,000, and I will let Josh talk to you about what describing it.
This request is for a year-end employee appreciation. As many years have passed, the city has done the employees at the end of the year. That has been taken away this past year. We're recommending putting some of that money back in there. Not full, not with the stuff in the past year, but we are recommending that you do that employee, year-end employee appreciation.
There is a question.
Yes.
The, the reason why we did away with that is under the recommendation of the previous city manager that served for six months. He felt that it was unlawful or unethical to do that. How do you feel about that? And, and why would he say that? I'm just curious if you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I understand what you mean.
Yeah, it's, it's come up in other places. I can tell you, every city that I've been in has been done before. Continually being done. It's a very common practice. I actually tried to do some research, couldn't find anything on it. There is that question of whether or not you can do it, can do, can't do it. Um, I will tell you a big trend right now that cities are offering, as you know, the police departments, they are poaching one from another and offering signing bonuses, recruitment bonuses. There's all sorts of these different incentives as employees or as employees, as cities, communities and businesses are trying to poach employees. So the legality of it from, from what I can understand is. So we do have grants here to convince them illegal.
And if you don't mind, just one other thing is if, if there is grant, and you can explain, um, if there is a problem with the ethics, I think if they were just given to everybody like as a Christmas bonus, um, is that ethical or legal? And then also, um, I, I would be all in favor of implementing it as a reward system for, for job performance. I think that's perfectly good. But anyway, what were.
I don't have any problems with it as long as it's being taxed as it can count. And I haven't had a chance to actually see if we're doing that, but if we are, then I.
And I would actually, I absolutely agree with that. Should be taxed, I think.
Cool. I don't have a problem and Grant's okay with it, so.
And I like what, uh, Dave said, though. I think it ought to be something that, that is a kind of a performance-based thing to where, yeah, it's a little extra, but it's, you know, based on meeting certain performance uh, goals or merits that, that's administered accordingly.
Maybe we can establish something on the line to make sure it's.
I think for this year where that can't be done, you know, within the next few weeks, I think it'd be okay to myself. I mean, I think it'd be okay to, you know, follow through on, on what you were considering here, so.
Any other thoughts?
All right, I'm going to go into public hearing to discuss the budget amendment, this will be your twenty-two.
Do we have a motion? Yes, sir.
Second.
Setting my councilman Allen, Allen favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consider ourselves in a public hearing. Are there any for the public that would like to comment on the suggested or budget changes? Seeing none, would entertain a motion to go back into regular session?
I move to go back to regular session. I'm just trying to keep you going here. I don't know what you're trying to do for tonight, but I'm trying.
Well, I didn't get it that's why. I called at six o'clock. I'm just kidding. All right, I, uh, if there's. Then I guess we just need a motion to approve it at this point, so. Do we have a motion and second, do you have a motion?
Um, I was just curious what the, um, was that we were changing just for the public's information on the.
It's nine thousand for the, the lighting, the pool, fifteen thousand for the, uh, employees. So twenty-four thousand we're asking additional in the general fund. And then for the rest of it, it's just moving the ARCA funds for, um, that we already received for the kiosk. And then we just received the, um, grant, so that money would cover the expenses for the hub renovation.
All right, and how, how many employees do we have that this incentive would be?
Full time, we have forty, okay, I should note this, we just.
So it's around forty?
Forty.
Yeah, thirty to forty.
Yeah, yeah, right around forty.
All right, okay.
Yeah, and then we have a handful, I believe, ten full or part-time, year-round employees that we can.
Does the motion still stand?
Yeah, so we set up a motion, hand me second by councilman White.
Who made the original motion?
Councilman White made the original, I second. This one.
I've been pushing hard to get this through.
Is there any other? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any motion passes? And then next item, we have Mr. Yak here with us tonight. Um, we have my adjustment proposal for, so it really might be.
What is the speed and what do you talk for? He's got, uh, down there by his house. Going sticking two parcels. Over here, still hearing me?
Yes.
So this was the parcel. There was a parcel here that was just west of East Trader Court there. And the rest of it was another parcel. So he is taking this as one parcel and then the remainder is that. So he's just adjusting the boundaries for future desires.
And this is our one funding zone.
Went to ninety zoning was pretty, basically he started with two parcels and he is with two parcels. He's just been, uh, like you said, putting the one out by the road and the other one is in the back. And so after we approve this, he's going to come in for his own change in December.
See, being optimistic, he says after we approve it, I agree. Any questions or comments?
She is.
Okay. We didn't pay a motion?
I'll move, we approve.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any opposed? Councilman Bay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll keep passing it.
And I think they wanted to handle this also.
If I still did anything wrong, I apologize.
Mine's like.
You may, man, that'd be better.
So do you guys keep it or do we take it?
You can take it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman.
We have Lorenz over this night. I don't know what the public knows. Lorenz has been interning with us for what, two, three months? Since August, so, yeah, two months. And, uh, he, uh, gave us some recommendations, Dave, that he saw why he, he seemed like he is here, has been here and so we'd like to invite him to address the council. Give us a key patch.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm sorry to put this out in the air, so thanks to, I don't know, especially on the job for reaching out. And he's the reason why I'm returning. I think one thing I was thinking about, one of the things about all the employees, which is our forty employees, about ten part-time, which they mentioned there was one intern. I am, uh, uh, I was, I've been enjoying my time here as an intern. I'm very grateful for the staff. We have a really good staff here that's enjoying the city and I'm very grateful for all of you. Thank you so much for all of everything that you guys have brought me. As I was working here, uh, I noticed that was something that I struggled personally, even in helping with, was the front desk. Uh, I noted that it's kind of complicated to take all the calls every day, but like third days are kind of slower. But there's some nights that are just packed and this can really take all the calls that people are getting. And sometimes there will be people at calls saying that they've tried to call me full-time and stop today and we never answer and we never reach out. So I was asked by, um, Josh, babe, to give a solution to this problem or three solutions to this problem, which I thought would be considered by the council. Um, first one was that we could have an automated system. Like someone will call, say, go through that process and they can, they can choose or they, they can pay the bills that they're looking for. If they're looking for someone in the office, which was also a problem, not a problem, most of the effort I got to were people that were looking for other people inside of the office. And there wasn't a, a, there was only one direct line to the office, which was the front desk. And the second option was the kiosk, which was just recently mentioned. Um, we also would be considering that. Maybe it would help the public and community. And number three, which was the best one I thought to be, was to hire a part-time, part-time employee and help, and assist these calls. Um, and as I said, all these three options are great, um, but I will leave that to the council to choose which one would be best for the budget and what it would be to go for. But number three would be my big overall solution.
Why did you choose three?
Um, because I thought that even, I feel like I took that position for a little bit and I felt like I helped enough and the fact I was actually helping the city and the community. And I was supporting it in my own way, even though it was little, I felt like I'm doing that, that's increasing those calls and also seeing those people.
Yeah, and if you're running by a broadened for budget, good for, for number three to hire someone.
Um, I'm.
Why don't we just hire you, Lorenzo? I hope you got a pretty good offer. Yes, that's good. Um, well, one of the questions I have, I know the, number one says we could use a automated machine. We're, yeah, as far as getting the automation done, like and function and.
Everybody's looking at each other. It's a work in progress. It's getting better, it really is. It is, that is the plan is to make it for a lot of it. People want to get to somewhere they can. It's a difficult process and to be honest, a lot of people, they call in, they want to talk to someone right now.
Right, and we discussed that as well. One of the that's been one of the things that you can, I don't know, um, as far as the phone calls go, um, is that still happening? Are we still missing a lot of phone calls that way? Is it because they land on the phone or how, because you had mentioned that a lot of people are calling and saying, you know, I've tried to call several times and haven't been able to get it. And I heard that's a complaint, so. Tager, this comes down to you. Are you still getting that same complaint? Is that same complaint still happening? I don't know. And is it because, I guess, is it because we're on the phone and somebody's trying to call and they can't get through or it must have worked and.
So I've heard the complaint. Um, I have really tried to answer as many phones as possible. But it is hard when someone calls in and you're on the phone or if I'm trying to.
You have another phone call.
Or if I have a technical issue that I'm calling Polaris or I'm calling Express or.
We have technical issues with our Polaris? Polaris or whatever. I know, I'm just joking, but.
And then we had, and then I was trying to get ahold of a different kind of billing issue with a different company coming in and that was making a payment day. Forty minutes trying to get ahold of them. And so there was calls coming in, so I ended up just hanging up and trying to, um, get that squared away. And then trying to also manage what's coming in with citizens, residents coming in, paying bills and trying to be available for them. Sometimes, again, two or three calls may go unanswered depending on the time of day. So it's just one person trying to, and I've been trying my best to try and get to everything that I can on it, so. Um, I'm definitely open to any suggestions that you guys may have or have anything to help with.
I got questions.
Yeah.
Okay, so this busyness that we're experiencing right now, is that due to kind of catching up from, from the last person? Or is this something that if we were proactive, we'd still, like, I mean, if we, if we had had like maybe three or four months of just really getting ahead of things and then, and then staying proactive at that point to keep on top of things, do you think in that case that it would be better? Or do we feel that, that it, this is an ongoing thing that no matter what, would continue to happen?
And I think it's a mixture of both of just cashing out mainly, um, because there has been a lot of things that have slipped through cracks that I've been trying to pay back up and understand. I appreciate the patience that people have shown with me and like learning the processes of billings and stuff like that to try and help out as much as I can. Um, I feel like once I get my, you know, my new family or I, I I feel like we can get on top of it. It's just kind of like a catch-up and, and stuff that I don't know quite right now. I'm, you know, having to pay and have someone call you back or stuff like that and handoff messages, which I don't really want. Still like handing stuff off to, uh, department heads or, you know, people that didn't rely on them, but I can get, get care of it, so.
How much, how much of your workload though, um, in, like as far as calls coming in, how much of it is for another department? And we talked about this too. Would you guess maybe for phone calls coming in, is they're looking for somebody else saying, oh, I need to get ahold of somebody over water or something like that?
Not, not super majority, but where I'm still kind of in the phase of learning, I'm happy to turn those down just because I'm still learning, you know, like the connections, you know, uh, zonings and stuff. I, I bring the heavily on Brian and Dean and Trevor, you know, a lot to kind of, but I feel like I'm taking it up a lot quicker. I just need a little bit more time.
Rhonda, tell us about the kiosk machine too, because didn't you already throw twenty-five thousand in the budget for that?
Part of that. I mean, there are times when the phones are ringing. We've got several systems waiting, you know, the people on the phone, I want to pay their bills. These people want to pay bills. They want to, you know, give a business license, whatever. And we've got one person out there trying to juggle all of this. So if we had a kiosk or something that could, you know, help with people coming in to make payments and, and those types of things, then, then that could probably take, you know, definitely take some of that away, but.
I know on, uh, you know, I called in on several automated phone calls and they do have the option to be able to pay your bill and things like that. So if you're calling to pay a bill, press one, you press that number and then they ask you for your information and, you know, an automated thing, not an actual person to pay. You put in your information and things like that and you're able to pay your bill that way. And is that, that we can, it was my, I'll just tell you my thoughts and then the council can ask more questions, but so I've seen this. I think, I think that automated, getting the phones automated is, is one of the biggest things. And even if we could do automated payments from the phone and things like that, so people can pay their bills online or you can get in the kiosk. The other thing is I, I also recognize, like councilor Verdes said, that there's a learning curve and so be able to get up to hundred percent speed is going to take some time. Um, but I'm not necessarily against hiring a part-time person, but I think the intern's been really good. To do that, why couldn't we just continue the internship and make it a paid internship? Are you getting paid? See, there you go. And, and until we see at some point, maybe we don't need that any longer or, or whatever. But to me, a combination of those would probably be the best scenario. I like the internship thing. Yeah, but I, I think that definitely ought to be continued. And I know councilor Booz and I are pretty push for that to, to, I think that's a good thing. So I'd definitely say continue that. Um, and then managing, um, he, the, the intern can spend the forty minutes on the phone, you know, on hold while you're doing, you know, those types of things. So then, you know, I think those responsibilities and delegating those things out properly. And I, I mean, you guys are professional with that, but I, you know, I don't think it's going to cost us any more to, to have an intern, right? So we don't have to change anything in the budget that way. Um, it might cost us a little bit to do that automated stuff, but I, we've talked about that and we just really need to get that done.
Is that a map? I mean, is your phone switch capable of automation and the programming or should you upgrade?
From what I understand, it's capable.
We I don't know how else to put that, but I think we have work orders put in, right? I don't know how to put any less bluntly than that. We've had several work orders put in to get these things done, but I don't know that we've actually seen got much help with that. we've actually seen got much help with that.
Previous management, they come in and take out all the phones. We now have all of those back. We have phones in all the offices. We're getting it automated again. And what we would do with a kiosk that's really interesting? If we get a kiosk that can interface how we want. If somebody comes in and Taylor's working with someone up front, they go pay their payment or say they need to talk to Brent, something on parts. Those kiosks have an attached phone and you can take parts and wreck and have a call there. So again, even if they need to call in and they're confused, it gives them multiple options. These options, Lorenzo brought it himself. He came up with these options. He's right on par. Exactly what we're looking for is why we should keep Lorenzo. But each one of these options are something we need to incorporate a little bit into. And ultimately, when people walk in that front door, we want to give them a good experience. Especially if they're paying us money, we want to make sure they're having a good experience and taking care of any problems that they do have. Each one of these options are something that we do need to address and implement.
Mayor, I I will add that we are pursuing another intern already. I'm working on that right now. We have a couple candidates, I think, at USU. I got the information from Sunshine from the past post, and so we'll be working on that. And, um, Mr. Bake also mentioned that we might look at even students at the high school that are looking for work, uh, uh, work release intern type situations. So I'll visit with Mr. North at the high school and see, uh, let him know that. And I don't know that they would probably be a little more limited being a high school student, but there's things I'm sure they could help with that might free up time or or whatever. Uh, but for sure, the Utah State, Lorenzo's been awesome and and I've appreciated getting to know him a little bit and and seeing his work and and, uh, you know, we're hoping to get another one just as good as him. Now that he's set the bar, we're going to try to make sure to match that or even try to exceed that, which will be hard. But anyway, that's that's the plan.
Can I say one more thing? Taylor, I want you to know, I appreciate what you're doing. And I, I think, um, you know, when I said that, um, you know, are we trying to catch up? It wasn't referring to your newness. It was more a reference to you came into a situation where there was a lot of catch-up to do. So, so anyway, I just want you to know that you've done a great job and we appreciate what you're doing.
Imagination.
I just wanted to make an excuse here. I definitely want to make sure that this gets addressed as this has been an ongoing issue that has been brought to my attention though. So that is my goal is to definitely make sure that I address this appropriately. But again, I know that I'm trying my best to learn as quickly as possible for you guys and I don't want it to sound like it's an excuse, oh, I'm setting off old or whatever. If there's things that I can do, please, please let me know so I can be better and exceed those expectations.
I've only heard good about you and I think the rest is most probably anyway.
And I think that I really think that just continuing with the internship, um, in some form to, you know, even if it's just filing paperwork or whatever, those things that are very simple to do, but do take time, you know, just having somebody there to take those tasks so that that gives you more time to focus on. And again, I can't reiterate enough, we need to get our quote systems straight because that's probably one of the biggest issues. Um, but I I don't see any problem not a kiosk. What do you think about? That's probably the one out there for me that's, I don't know if that's going to be helpful or not.
I I would say personally for me, I'd like a little more information as to, you know, what, how it works, what it looks like, what the kind of the vision is, um, and and what's available. And and obviously, as you said, we want it to interface with our stuff so we don't have to reinvent the wheel or or whatever. So anyway, I I would have a hard time supporting a kiosk right now just because I don't know. Um, I think the intern, um, if we felt like we were behind and we needed to hire a part-time, I think I I I support Lorenzo's decision that way, but but definitely, you know, I'm I'm going to really work hard to try to get us another intern as quickly as we can and and see what we can do, even get a couple possibly, so.
Do we, um, do we all have another entity that has a kiosk that we could go look at? Kind of, you know, or phone too and?
I'm sure we can find one. There's a lot of options out there. We can find one we can actually see. The one we found was actually quite a bit cheaper, but it didn't interface, it didn't do what what it needs, what we needed to do. But there are options and obviously we'll bring some of the facts for you to see with actual demos that can interface. It doesn't do any good if people can't do their business at the kiosk.
Right.
And and I got one more question. So the kiosk, you said, we say that we've got a line that's kind of, you know, at times we have people lined up and then we got, you know, phone calls to deal with and stuff. Is the people that are coming and getting in line, are they seniors who don't, who aren't tech savvy that that are that are there or is it? Cause, cause I I'm concerned that they wouldn't use a kiosk anyway if it was that demographic, so.
I think a lot of the one, the senior would be more paying bills, so it'd be just a.
A quick.
I think they just want more of the interaction rather than they're used to.
Perfect.
Um, but there's also issues that we have found that basically happens. Some billing, for example, recently that has caused kind of things to get out of the whack this month, I think only last month with the phones a little bit. Also, there was some errors. Kirby was getting calls from dispatch saying, no one's answering your phone and like, but the call was never coming. So there was also errors on the phone side of things too. We weren't receiving the calls properly. And so they were going to our dispatch team and then they would go to Kirby. So, um, I think Kirby did get that straightened out with Spectra.
Yeah, we know that call.
So. So they they've been able to immediately to, and I think that's also maybe some of the frustration. I knew one guy came in the office and said, but you're not going to be calling the phone? He's like, it's raining busy. And there was no call coming in and it was his kind of busy tone. So there were just different scenarios that kind of just one-off scenarios.
I think we need to fix our phone system. That's going to help us a lot. I have another, uh, thought that already slipped online. Do we have any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I've got just an observation, I guess. Um, is this discussion here to to propose to hire a part-time employee? Is this because it has an impact on the budget, the administrative budget particularly? Or is it already included within the 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 approved budget? And if so, I guess, Josh, is it in within your authority to go ahead and hire a part-time employee if you if you if you, you know, see an issue and a concern? Can you just go ahead and make this?
Right now, the discussion tonight is really with Lorenzo Levy. I want him to have the opportunity to have the experience to present that again.
Typically you would.
Before you actually hire someone tonight, that's not the discussion tonight. This is purely to let him give a recommendation.
Oh, I think it's good for the.
No, no, that's fine. Typically you would, as manager, you'd you'd identify the issue and have it within your ability to make the hire. Okay, so this is, well, we appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Yep, okay. Just wanted to be certain.
One other thought that comes to mind, and I know we're spending quite a bit of time on this, but it's, I I appreciate the council's thoughts and questions and things like that because that'll stimulate hopefully ideas and things, other solutions to, because this is a, this is the face of the city. This is the first thing, the first interaction or their experience. They're trying to pay a bill or something like that. So it is. But one other thought I want to set up, how, how can we work with the public to try and get them set up on automatic payments? I know I'm set up on an automatic payment system with Roosevelt City, with Canadian Gas, with Moon Lake, with everyone that I can.
Can I make your comment?
Yeah.
Roosevelt City's automatic payment is a nightmare to figure out how to set it up.
Well, that's what I'm wondering because my wife said that we we just have our, pretty sure, whatever we think is going to be each month come out of our thing. But how, I mean, have we tried that route? Have you tried to make that a little easier? Have we tried to send that out in Waterville and say, um, here's how you can get on and get this automated so it just comes out every, every month? I I do that, I get a, usually I get a credit during the winter time and then in the summer time I use that up and but like I will never check, I don't do anything. It just pulls out of my account a hundred dollars every month and can we encourage people to do that? And it's going to really.
Mayor, I can probably, um, address that a little bit. She she is right. We we go through express bill pay and it's not the easiest. Um, when Randy was here, he'd actually, when they'd come in the city building, he would take five minutes and say, I will do it for you. And he would do that. I don't know how he found the time to do it, but but anyway, long story short, we do go through express bill pay and they can do it automatic withdraw, but it is tedious to get it set up.
Yeah.
And and whether we look at a different company for that or get with the express and see if there's another way that we can fine tune it and make it easier, but we have put it in the billing. Um, it's been a while. Maybe we need to do it again. Um, we did have instructions that we sent out in the billing. There was a mail insert that had step by step on how to set it up.
Gotcha. Yeah, just ideas and thoughts. And again, I I appreciate you, Lorenzo, and all your hard work and wish you the best. Where, can you tell us where you're going? Logan, Logan, and what will you be doing there?
Studying or working?
Okay, gotcha. More studying. More studying. You're a good student. Well, thank you and we'll take these into consideration. Obviously, as Councilman Helen Cocke has already mentioned, a lot of these are in the purview of our city manager, but it is good for us to be aware, but I appreciate you taking your time and working with us for the last few months.
Thank you.
Uh, Brett, some time over, you know the state street project.
Thank you. I think you ought to make Lorenzo stick around the way to the Thanksgiving decorations and.
Oh, yeah.
And, um, let's see what's my time framework supposed to be? I don't know whether to drag this out or.
I don't know.
I don't know what side you're on.
The mayor usually makes a bet and he.
Anyway, I'll do my best to keep it short. Appreciate the time here. Uh, we talked a couple of months ago before we had our PSN meeting on the state street project at that point. I presented an issue that we had along with budget. I also at that time said that it may change after PSN. Unfortunately, it did. Unfortunately, it was in the wrong direction. So I'm back here to present where we're at now and to get some direction from the council on how to proceed with the project. Um, I would like to make one correction. The attachments that I have on here, the numbers of the options don't necessarily imply number of the spreadsheets. I apologize for that. So with that, I'd like to give you a little bit of background as far as where we've been and where we've got to and why we're at. Uh, currently, back in the days in seventeen, twenty seventeen, we submitted the application to joint highways for a project. And with that, the project funding was set at. I'm not sure I say this right. Project's funding is we requested one point five million dollars from the grant with the city bringing in a hundred and five thousand dollars. So in order to get the one point five, the city has to contribute one hundred and five thousand dollars. But with that, then the related agreement was prepared and signed. And at that point, the hundred and five got increased to three hundred eighty-two thousand. And the city agreed instead of putting in a hundred and five thousand, they would put in the three hundred and eighty-two thousand. And with that, UDOT prepared what was what's called their executive project definition document that showed that they had committed to that three hundred and. Give it the extra two hundred seventy-seven thousand. So the total project budget that we were working on was the one point eight eight two dollars. Uh, what I want to do on this particular fund was show that with that funding, we're currently at a seven hundred twenty-two thousand dollars that the city has to come up with. And that's where we were at prior to going into PSN. And that's what I presented last time with the idea that you guys had already committed the hundred and five thousand and two hundred seventy-seven, which is the three hundred eighty-eight thousand. So that that's where we were at. But I thought it was, that when I was putting this together, I thought it was important that you guys saw the whole picture, not just, because before I always said we were like three hundred thousand dollars short.
Yeah, so the the total project was anticipated when you came in for the last time, two point two million. We have funding to the grant and money that we've already been contributing, one point eight million, which puts, and then the shortfall of three hundred forty.
That's correct. Which also puts you at needing to come up with seven hundred twenty-two thousand dollars. Of which, uh, the irrigation items, the irrigation line you were putting in contributed about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, culinary water.
Secondary, second.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah.
Well, we got, I.
No, the color will know it's secondary. The irrigation is secondary, yes. Yeah, okay. Then there was the culinary water items, we were going to replace them with culinary water taps to the homes. And then we had road items. So that's how that, that money all broke down. So if you go to the next page. After PSN, you can notice that the three hundred thousand, three hundred and forty thousand dollars bumped up to five hundred twenty-seven thousand. So UDOT have an inventory that goes through it. He's watching prices and all that and with what's happening with COVID and all that, prices have gone up. And so he packed on two hundred thousand dollars. There you go, two hundred thousand dollars. And so then we're, that's where we're currently at right now. And we're hoping that that's where we're at. We don't know what's going to happen. The only thing that filed up hard out there, the way you go to bed, you don't know what you're doing. Uh, the guy that does the stuff with you, he's pretty good.
So it's still not bid yet. This is this is still not bid.
No, that's what we're trying to do is figure out what we want to do. Because right now, if we bid this, you would have to come up with that extra shortfall. You'd have to deposit that at UDOT where you bid the front.
Can we bid it in phases to where we can? You can bid.
That's what we're talking about. Yeah, there's several ways we could bid it. Uh, and basically the way it's going to come down to just letting the money go to the phases.
One of the, one question that I had, because we had mentioned, we had went over this in one of the meetings that we had this morning and I was wondering, is that, well, the project's probably not going to be done. We're ready to stay in, probably mid, midsummer, late fall or midsummer or even into the fall next year, right? On this project?
Um, we're still on track.
Is there an opportunity to take this, what we have, and submit an application to CIB and see if we can come up with some of the shortfall there?
If you want to delay the project.
Okay, it would delay it, yes. Okay.
Did probably kick it off or you want to bid it about this time next year?
Because when is the, well, there they do have the emergency funding cycle with CIB.
And it'll have to work like a little bit. Yeah. Hold on a little bit to get in and get an approval. If you look at CIB, Mayor, and and looking at it right now, I'm all like, that's right. The next application date that that they will accept applications is in February. With that, with that February, uh, deadline, it could go in and show up in the March, April or maybe on CIB, whenever they put us into that schedule. And so at that meet, at one of those meetings, they could address it as an emergency and suspend and fund the project. And so we would be looking at a March, April or May timeframe to get that money. And so if we held off bidding the project until you had that money from CIB, you would look at those dates and then add the advertisement grade and the bid grade, which would be is about two months. And so that's where we push the project back. The other option that you may be able to look at, and that is to have the city front the money in anticipation that you would give.
Yeah, that's what I was going to add.
And that would be the gamble of the city. You know, as if it wasn't approved by CIB and the city front loaded it, so they did. That would be the, that would be the risk that you would be taking.
What's the, um, someone mentioned another possible grant, uh, funding option for that? Or was I was I just taking part in the money?
Someone's smaller, the next phase of this.
Yeah, and so the, and so let's, let's talk about this just a little bit because we've checked into different alternatives in this. So the first thing that once we saw where this budget was, we worked with our UDOT budget manager, Larry Mott, for you.
manager very much, will you? And we made contact with Chris Potter, who oversees this smaller fund. The one point five is the maximum money that we can receive. So to expand what we received in the first grant, there is not an option to do that. So what we have, the options that we do have with this, as Brett explains these different options, is we can scope this project to stay within the budget and then include what is this project in the application for next year, for the next project that goes on. And so it's not like we're going to leave a hole in the middle of this in asking for projects, whatever happened to be scoped out of this one would be put into the next project that goes on, which is already being looked at, going from third to first, adding in the culinary, take out the transit, improve the road, and some other items that. And so it wouldn't be as if we're doing anything, we scope this project back to stay within the budget that you tell us we have to live within and go on with that. The other thing that you just asked, and with what Brett was talking about, was bidding this in phases, what we would do is take this and put the project based upon the budget that we are given to live with. Then what we would propose to do is have an additive that would go on. If bids came in, you know, ten percent under what is being estimated, have an additive that would add that ten percent back into the project. Once it's bid, if there's funding to do the additives, then they could be awarded under the budget. If there isn't, then they are cut and scaled into the project as it has been determined to do. And so we can bid it that way, essentially in phases, UDOT process or call them. So we'll do this.
So a combination, let's say we bid it, scoped it back, we bid the project, we did the additives, and then we went to CIB to fund it. Is that a possibility? Or do we have?
The answer is no. The answer is no. Bid the project through UDOT, and with these federal funds, all the money has to be on deposit.
Okay.
You can't do this. There again, like I say, if you're going to try that, the city is taking that risk, you're going to put the money up front and possibly give it approved later. I'll be honest, I wouldn't recommend doing that, simply because of how this program works. It would be better to take and build three quarters of this project and then put that other quarter in the next project than to, than to risk that. True. I'm going to call it to risk that.
One, one question I would have for you, JR, is, is this on the one year list?
This project, it's been on our one month list for a long time.
We said. I don't know, because if it's not on that list, then you're really.
I know. Is it on? We have our one year, two year, and five year. Is it on any of those?
It's got to be on the one year list to go to.
Right. Help me understand the program a little bit, how we got this funding in the first place. So let's say next year, let's say we face it and we do what we can afford this year, and then we apply for the remainder next year. How, how does that work and how?
The, the way this works, and let's go back to the beginning of this project. This, this project was initially applied for two thousand and seventeen.
Yeah.
So we've been that long getting to this point. They had changed the program a little bit in that they didn't fund projects for several years into, it was five year, when you applied funds and they approved you, you were five years. That's why it works in twenty-two building this project. Now they have changed that program to where it's a three year cycle. So when they take applications, this January, it is to fund the projects for the fiscal years twenty-four and twenty-five. So they shortened that a little bit. And that's what it is, is we have, this program takes applications the second Friday of January each year. It's a set program. I will tell you, the problem that we are going to have with the program coming forward is they have overprogrammed it. This January, they're going to be looking at a project and a half. That's all they have the program at. They have about two point two million dollars in the program for twenty-four. The following January, they'll have seven. So they'll be back on schedule with projects. And so this year is going to be really competitive for that one and a half projects. And so I don't believe anybody is going to be able to count that they're guaranteed to get the next funding cycle because of being that we're all going to apply, we're looking to put the application together and ask for the funding for the next project for the city. And whether it happens or not, that's going to be the question that's at with this project. But with that in mind, then the following cycle, when they have the seven million dollars, that means they'll fund it for projects or buy, or buy projects probably with that. That's pretty good odds. You're only competing against the key entities. And so it's pretty good odds that you would be funded because it will be the next phase of this project. I mean, this is, this project we're talking about doing is, but it's the second phase of State Street. We did the very bottom end with flooding area with this funding. This is the second phase, the third phase, and they know we're going to come back and keep asking the money until we get to the north city boundary on the State Street. And so they do know there's a phase to project. And so.
That was going to be my next question is, is this funding applicable to other streets in other areas of our town, or does it have to be contiguous?
No, no, it isn't. This funding, in fact, the last application that was put together for this was the extension of Eighth South, going up past the Seminole.
Okay.
That project wasn't approved. So that is also a street. Lagoon is eligible for this. Any street that is designated as collect, if these would be Lagoon, State Street, Eighth South. There, any, there's a number of streets in the city that is eligible for this funding package.
One of the reasons for the question, we're trying, we're working on our trail system, and as part of our trail system, we're trying to get those sidewalks up to, at least Second South, I think is what the junior high is on. And so we want to make it, we want to make it to there, and maybe we look at CIB for funding a portion of that street and then leapfrogging and say, okay, when we get funding, you know, that'll be funded by, tell me the name of this.
This is the Joint Highway Committee. This is the small urban, it's the small urban fund, the Federal Highway Transportation that comes to the state.
Roosevelt hasn't seen on that committee.
Yeah, I heard of it, but it could be Ryan or Josh would name.
It's whoever the city designated and works through the league that have the position. And they're, like I say, there's thirteen members to that, and that's thirteen entities that are eligible for this. So it's a great opportunity.
Sorry for the many questions, but.
No, no, we wanted to have this and talk about, like, hold things out on the options, because how we can get this.
Just one other question. I know that we, with phase one, the first project we did, we put in sidewalks. Is this going to connect the sidewalks up to this project as well? I can't remember if it was or not.
This would have the sidewalks, based upon which option we do with this, it has the sidewalks here. It starts the sidewalks at Eighth South and connects coming north. And with the base option, talking about, we can get the sidewalks up to the highway. The third or fourth all, all of it in this is what I'm talking about, this would bring the sidewalks on up to Fourth South. And we don't believe that we can get beyond that. The intent is to get the sidewalks connected eventually, whether it be in this project or in the future project, but to have those sidewalks get all the way up here to the school.
Okay.
There's already sidewalks at us. It's right out here, the third.
Yeah.
So it's just a matter of be, from fourth to third would be the only area that would not have sidewalks, if we go with the one option.
And so that would connect the sidewalks all the way up to the highway, basically.
Yes.
Okay. I just, I did have somebody ask me the other day when that was happening, and they said that they had heard it was happening soon, and for some reason, I just couldn't remember if that was included in this project. I'm glad to hear it is.
It is included in this project.
Okay. Well, are there any questions before we look at the, the different proposals that we? All right, if not.
All right, I'm going to let Brett finish. If there are questions, we'll answer them.
Quite frankly, your questions are really good because you have to understand the funding. That's one of the reasons why I started out with that, is I wanted to understand, make sure you guys understood the funding that we're going for. We do have the option of the additives. And so just to let you know on that, though, is that you don't have an option of choosing which additive because of which contractor. That's totally hidden from you, you just have to decide whether, if there's funds to go with the additive, they award the additive. If there's not funds, they'll come back to you and say, the example I get is maybe you're a dollar short of being awarded that additive. They'll come back to the city and say, do you want to throw this extra buck in so we can do this additive? And they'll say, and you say yes.
Sure.
So you have that option, but you don't have an option of choosing which additive or whatever. It's got to help you in order, and you don't give the contractors order or anything until you say yes.
Sure.
So with that, so again, this slide was to just show you that our PSNE review didn't help us, it hurt us, and it put us into where we better come talk to you guys and get a serious answer. So what the next, the next slide, which I call option one, on the front sheet, this was called option two, but the front sheet is that we would basically stop all of the sidewalk, we put widening, all the drainage improvements, everything, US forty, except on the other side of US forty, we would go in and chip seal between US forty and four hundred south to fix the signal or the lane configuration issues. To me, that's a must. If we're going to do this, we've got to do that. So this would be why we call our bare bones, this is the least that you could do on the thing. As you can show, that actually puts us forty thousand dollars in the good. So you could do it with your current budget, if you end up, you know, if prices were just right, we would have forty thousand dollars to come back on, so.
When you say chip seal, you're including a crack seal before the chip seal always?
Uh, yeah, we would. Yeah.
It makes a huge difference.
It makes, it makes a huge difference.
Whether, whether the contractor did or the city would do that, we would make sure. But the whole purpose of doing that again is to fix the lanes there at US forty with the signal and all that, which everybody wants to do. You know, there are questions that. And again, that would give us, so that one is easy to do, and we're doing it within the budget.
Now, when we looked at the budget, we have the, let's see.
So three hundred and eighty.
Three hundred and eighty-two thousand set aside. Do we have any more than that? Or is that it? Okay, just want to make sure. Okay. At least for one. Okay.
Yeah, so that would, that would be that you're committing the three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars to the project. The only thing you absolutely positively had to commit to is a hundred and five. Okay, the second option, which is option three on the cover sheet, is that then we would go ahead and do exactly what we did in option one, except that there's been a keen interest in the council to go ahead and get that center turn lane all the way up to Burke. So from US forty all the way up there, we would chip seal all that and restripe it. So we wouldn't do any sidewalks or anything else on the other side of US forty, but we would get the center turn lane all the way up to it. And with that, you guys would have to come up with a million and a half million, if the prices come in like that. But that's kind of like the next, the next one. The next option, which is option three, we can go back and talk about this more, get some more specifics. The next option would be to do the sidewalk and all that on US forty to, to four hundred south. So it'd still be at the bottom of the hill, we still have that gap between four hundred south and three hundred south and sidewalk. That's a, that's kind of an expensive section to do. And then we would also go ahead and chip seal and restripe up to one hundred. Or we could take that out. If we wanted to take that out, we could, you know, we could take some of that out if we wanted to. Connects like two hundred and two thousand, just to do that little section, we could bring it down by forty thousand or so if we didn't want to get that center turn lane in there. And there's like thirty other options we could do.
What, what is entailed in adding the center turn lane? Is that just striping, or is the road have to be widened or?
Well, just to be totally striping. The only reason we would do the chip seal is to cover up the existing strip.
But, but just to stripe the turn lane costs fifty thousand dollars.
No, you have to do the chip seal.
Well, I'm looking at option one and two. And the only difference is you're adding a center turn lane, restripe up to a hundred south.
But they're going to chip seal from up to hill.
But so option one needs to be included in that.
Right. Go back, let's go back, let's just point out, go back to option one, or options.
Just to intercept.
Okay, so what I did here is I did a, if we just did all that, I subtracted, but that's going to save us five hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars out of the budget. That's where that came up. So now if we go to the next option, we still have the five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, but to chip seal and restripe it, we're going to have to add back forty-four thousand dollars. So does that answer your question?
So we're going four blocks more on this.
Yes.
Yeah.
With the chip seal.
With the chip seal, which is really close to the price I presented to you at Council meeting last time. Was that forty-four thousand dollars? Then if you go to the third option, you see, I still saved that, added the forty-four thousand dollars back in there, and then I said, okay, now to do curb and gutter sidewalk work and all that is a hundred and ninety-four thousand.
And that's basically to the DMV term.
Yeah, the DMV term lane, and, yeah, we're still working with Strata, they've got a big box to move there, and going to need to let them know whether they need to keep going or whether it's going to be postponed now. And that would, the other part of it is, I guess, part of this is there's drainage on that side, but that had to be done. There's some storm drainage and that's kind of why that number's higher. It's not just the roadway work, it's the curb and gut, it's the sidewalk work, the drainage work and all that to get, to get up to four hundred. There's quite a bit of drainage work up there by four hundred that we want to do to put in some extra catch basins and whatnot to help the flow coming off that hill. That's a big concern that curbs had to fight with is the flow coming off that hill.
We've seen that.
Yeah. Uh, once we get up on top.
Probably yours.
Yeah. So yeah, so that, so that's a lot more than just sidewalk, that it's got a lot of the larger stuff in. Is that actually a question, Nelson?
Yeah. It was, I was thinking it was the same amount of streets that was being, other than the stripe, and three, three weren't one.
Yes.
Of a chip seal and a strip.
Yeah, it's quite a bit more.
Yeah.
Okay, what was the board? Option four, and I almost put it in there, I ordered me to do option three, but don't do the center turn lane. Yeah, that was, that was going to be my next option, that was going to be that.
Question, Troy, you would know this better as well as anyone, but I'm almost tempted to get them real quick, just to ask you, but if it's on it, if we have the two year and the five year, can we bump it to the one year?
No.
You can't.
I'm asking that on other projects, and it'd be extremely.
We do have street reconstruction on our one year list.
We could.
Title is street reconstruction.
There you go.
Yes.
That, that would work. So, and I think we've had that there.
Yeah, we put that, but just, just on these cases.
Well, that, if we do have it on the one year, to me, it makes more sense just to go with. Well, that, if we do have it on the one year, to me, it makes more sense just to go with one of the options that we can afford. And then the next, you know, in February, try and get that CIB money up to one, one hundred south with everything. But I don't know, maybe that's a discussion that we can have, Kirby with the commission of our other streets and things like that. But I know this one's been the high priority to get this state street done and tied into the rest of the infrastructure in the city. You kind of connect sidewalks, we have block ability and, and all of those things and so.
Right. And on our street list for this year, I've discussed this, you know, there's some streets that I haven't eliminated, but I've put off for the following year. So, so with that, we can move toward this project, which would get us a lot closer. And me personally, I'd like option three.
I always think we have, I'm sorry, do we have two hundred? Two hundred, two hundred plus extra dollars?
No, we don't have it lying around.
That's a good, that's a good answer.
There are, between ads, Kirby was saying there were, there's some ways that we can maneuver some of the money for other projects, you know, to put a priority in a different order. Something Ryan and I talked about as well is, because part of this infrastructure is, the cost of this infrastructure is from the water. There is potential that we could also draw some from the water source.
Okay. The one, the one thing I would like to point out, just so you're aware of it. These estimates include, I think it's a hundred fifty thousand dollars of contingency funds. That is set in there for overrun and that, you don't have to require that. Uh, you can't use some of that up for bidding, but we, we do have some contingency in there for.
That was gonna be my next question because if we go with option three, and so we, we make the necessary adjustments in the budget to go with option three. And then we bid it and it comes higher, then we're in the same position again. So, but if we go with option one or two and have this as an addition or, do you call it?
An addition.
An additive. And when we bid it, we have it as an additive, we have the money. It all looks good and the best lineup we're thinking, then we're not, we didn't buy it off option three, it's an additive. And that way, we're not putting ourselves in a uncomfortable situation where you guys are coming and presenting again, we bid and now we have to. So I, I would rather do option one or two where we know we have the money and, and even though it'll run a little bit, we still know we have the money. And then if it comes in what we're thinking, then we have it as an additive and we use that to get after that. That would be my suggestion or my thought. And then also where we do have the CIB roads and road construction or whatever for the one year. Then we can work on getting the rest of that funding through CIB or LBS.
My biggest thing is I definitely would want the intersection redone at the stoplight. I would worry about the turn lanes and stuff.
That's option one, right?
That has to be done.
Yeah, that, that is definitely option one.
So I, I say we do, because it, it wouldn't make a lot of sense to do option two if we're going to do option three, right?
So let's go back to option one.
Just do, well, and I don't get the vote, but I'd say option one sounds good with that, but then option three.
And it will. Yeah, just talk about what you said there. Yeah. So option one, again, that's going to chip seal and restripe and fix the turn lanes north of US forty, like, like we just mentioned. So very, very important to do all that. Again, this is the bare bones that you could do. Okay, let's go to option two. Option two includes just chip sealing and restripe into one hundred south. We wouldn't do any other improvements. Okay, now, what I heard you say, and I might have heard it wrong, was that we could do option two and that's not going to be a problem with option three.
No, option one, if we did option one, because option three is basically doing a sidewalk up to one hundred or four hundred south and still taking a turn lane up to one hundred south.
Yeah, we'll go to option three. Yeah, option three is, we would do every, we would do all the improvements up to, up to four hundred south.
We wouldn't have the turn lane up there.
No, this, this option would go.
Is option one or option three, option two, we don't, we rarely win their thing because if we go with option one, it gets the intersection done. And then if we had the additive, we would just do.
The only thing option two would give you is the center turn lane all the way up to Burge.
Right. And I did that, which is another thing in my mind is it's near a big deal as to intersection. And would only really entertain doing that if we were gonna extend the sidewalks and everything up to four hundred south. Because you're chip sealing an area that you're gonna pave and sidewalk, you're almost doing it twice, again.
The only other thing I would join here, and it's what we do with additives all the time, is, you know, the bid's gonna come in two hundred thousand dollars shorter than our estimate?
I don't know. Probably not, yeah, probably.
So the chances of getting the additive to do this option is a lot less than getting the additive to do option two. It's just one of those things you're rolling. If you're looking at just an extra.
We're gonna come into that with the A doing things twice. So H is an area we're gonna, we're gonna pay a couple of years or within a year later. Yeah, it's kind of a waste. And the turn lane is not, is near the issue that the, the intersection is.
Just so you know, whether it's the next time, the next days or whatever. So from the third right here, even though they may chip, but it's gonna be all torn up. It's gonna be milling filled at the minimum because we have to put a water line in. It won't be chipped again the following year. The chip is your simplest and cheapest way through the road with a new strip.
Well, that's what I was doing.
And you also have your, and you also have your irrigation line too.
Up to one hundred.
Yeah, right. That'll be all milled and then repaved.
Even though it's cheap, it would just, milling and everything.
And you're right, the shipping, all we're doing there is to get that center.
And it's costing us more than housing to do that, the turn lane, right, before redoing that road anyway. That's what I'm saying, I hate to do, I hate to see things done twice. And again, the chip seal is just a quick, but it's forty grand that we're gonna tear up and redoing. It's just wasteful. It's just wasteful.
I was just gonna say earlier, I understand we have a budget and we need to stay with that and I appreciate that. But I always hate seeing things done halfway if we can find a way to do more of it. You know, cause I kind of agree with Kirby. I kind of like option three, but I know we can't afford that. But I just, I'm concerned that we do something halfway and I go back years ago. Things are done halfway around here and then we end up, like I said, going back over and over and over and I don't want. I like it done right the first time as much as we can. I agree, option one gets at least what we need done, done right.
Correct?
Correct. And so, but if we're doing it, I don't know, I, I'm more leaning towards option two with the, the additives. Especially where Kirby had.
Either option three.
Option two with the additives or to get to option three if we can. Or at least, I like option three is what I would like. I mean, obviously, I think that gets as close as to where we want to be. So I prefer option three because I think that's gonna be the best benefit for the citizens. But I could go option two and see what happens, you know, down the road.
Would you like option four?
Option four.
Option four is option three, but minus the chip seal all the way up to one hundred south.
Yeah.
What, it was still two hundred thousand more though, wasn't it?
Go to options, go to three.
I don't remember. Three was two hundred thousand more.
So it's gonna be a hundred and sixty-five.
Yeah, we could take that forty-four, we could take that forty-four thousand dollars out of there.
Yeah, and I like that just because, and I get what you're saying, Don, but like I said, I keep doing things halfway and then redoing. So I wait until we have the money. So I like option, I do like option four as long as we have the money. And if you're saying that we're building a hundred fifty thousand technically, that does give us another buffer of forty thousand to where.
And I would be supportive of that, of that as well. I just, I just want to make sure we're doing as much as we can with what we have to get majority done. So that we're, we're meeting the, the needs, you know. And I, I just want to make sure we're not doing the bare minimum and then have to come back and redo a bunch of stuff anyway. And I know we're still gonna have to redo, but I can wait on the turn lane and, you know, on the chip and seal. I think, I think the paper.
There's some details we want to work out with Kirby with option four.
Sure.
Because we're not, because they're not doing the curb and gutter, but doing the storm drain and everything, that's a little bit of, details are a little workout. Cause if we ever did bring the curb and gutter and put the sidewalk in, that might change our drainage a little bit, but it'd be, we'd do what we could to minimize that.
That, that's the other reason why I think option ones are gonna get optioned. It gets us to that point. We're not doing anything wasteful beyond that. And I really think we can go to CIB and get some funding to do the rest of the program. And we already cleared one up and it's, and then we're doing all of that all together so that, you know, for drainage, sidewalks, widening the road, that hill is gonna be a nightmare. I know. I've seen you guys up on that hill working it over several different times, so.
But there, but there is an issue with some drainage on that hill if we don't, if we want to put the drainage boxes. If we don't move the curb and gutter in, it's totally different than if we move the curb and gutter.
Yeah.
There would be a little, there would be a little bit of rework there.
Yeah.
Just to be, put all the cards on the table.
Yeah. So, I don't know, how'd the council feel? What direction do we want to give the engineers to go on that? I said it now, so.
Well, I think option three has, listed, has the same problem as option two, correct? We're gonna have to tear up something.
Even he said with tearing up the center lane and striping and things, we're still gonna be reworking some of that if we go with option three.
So I think really. Go choose option one and then go from there later.
I think the same thing, option one, it's just for convenience, you're gonna, that's a really busy road. You're gonna dig it up once instead of three times.
When are we planning on fixing the road? Cause you said we'll put a new water line through there. I know some of that was included in this, right?
The secondary was.
Yeah, that's the secondary. There's only up here, that's past third here. That's from a, basically third, this is a third to first.
Is where the challenge, I, I. So I, I agree. And then, and then when we, if we can get the funding for the rest of it, then we can get the water line and everything in and do that section. And then we're not redoing really anything.
So if we do option one, we don't have to redo that section or anything? There's not gonna be any thing we'll have to dig up or do anything?
Just painting lines and a little bit of chip seal right there at the intersection.
There's not gonna be extra, that we know of, right? I mean, well, cause we do the, the secondary and everything at the same time or whatever?
Yeah, basically you're throwing away the chip seal with the striking on that area. Cause when we do that, we, because the closer you get to four, it'll have storm drain and all that that goes in there. So that's, it'll be, there'll be a little bit of throwaway on the chip seal on that area, but that.
That's made of wood.
I don't really call it throwaway because it is preserving the road too and it's good for, you know.
And on the other.
Thing anyway.
On the other side of the road, we're gonna have to dig that up anyway to do some water lines and stuff? Or what, what are we doing there that we're gonna have to dig it up?
Yeah.
On what side?
This side, cause we're doing the south side, right, of highway forty, so the north side of highway forty.
Like, like you said, there'll be some drainage.
Yeah, some drainage up.
No, what I'm saying is.
Clear, clear up here, clear up here.
Cause you mentioned from three hundred south to one hundred north, we have.
So that's, that's, I'm just trying to clarify, we, so if we do it, then we're gonna have to dig it up again for the other stuff, right?
We'll be back.
Yeah, the, the secondary and stuff, your irrigation is secondary. From second here, we will down, we're not there.
So, and you're gonna have to do that afterward, so it's better not to do the chip, okay. I'm just trying to clarify my mind which part. So what you're saying is we'll do south of highway forty, get all that done. You have a little storm drainage on that north side you might have to deal with.
Not if we do option one, no.
No, okay, so we don't have, is that something we need to for future though, or is that?
That's what they said, then if we do option three, they'll do some of that, but then they'll have to rework the storm drain too.
Is that something that's, cause I thought you mentioned something, there's problems there already.
Option three would be the four south and that would be the drainage included. And that's what we were talking about. Yeah, the issue was the water running off the hill right now, getting into some businesses and stuff. But if we had the drainage, you would have collection boxes catching that as it came down. And you wouldn't have that issue at the bottom.
But the collection boxes would be set at the existing curb and gutter and the plan in the future to get the sidewalk in, you're removing the curb and gutter in.
So probably better wait on those as well. That's what I'm trying to clarify, what we're digging up and what we're doing. I understand a little better now. I appreciate that, so.
So the one thing that could happen is if we bid option one and the bids came in lower, you have that extra two hundred thousand dollars that would come back to the city at the end of the project.
Yeah, and, and we might be able to use that. Well, who knows?
Cause whatever was left at the end of the project would come back to the city.
And then that would apply to the next. Yeah, if we go with option one, that would allow Kirby to keep his money to go ahead and forward to some of his projects that he's been holding off to maybe save some money for us.
Yeah, I think that, I think that I think we get right on trying to submit a project to CIB for the remainder of that road. That way it's not impacting your current budget or our current budget. And we might be able to get it, other than get it in the following year.
Well, that would be the best. In that way, you could include the transit type and the secondary and the road and all of that. Case you just get.
Mike, like I said, my concern is I just want to make sure whatever we're doing, we're doing it right and doing it right the first time. And I can support one, cause we're doing the part right that we won't have to dig up again and then the other part we can work on, so.
Yeah, so we have talked a fair bit and I'm getting to speed, but so option one, are we still talking utilizing the additives? Or are we going to re-sculp the project, stay within budget and then submit a new grant application to CIB or the additives out with option one?
What I'm hearing is with option one, we wouldn't do any additives.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to clarify.
So we're saying we're going to put forward a, a match funding for another, for another project, in budget.
Like, Josh, do you have anything that you would like to add on this, this issue?
I think that's a good one. It prepares us better for the future and Kirby and I were talking, we need to start it right on that next application. In that way, with the infrastructure build that has just been passed, hopefully there's money coming. But this way, we're preparing ourselves better to utilize every dollar we have.
One thing, Don.
And we could throw up the next, we could throw up the next project all the way up to first real fast if we needed to.
Yeah, yeah. And just to, to Don's point, and you know, wanting to do the option three, two hundred thousand, one thing to remember, minimum. And I don't know, CIB might have changed, but let's say minimum we get half and half, we, we double that money, we're just waiting a little bit. So it, we can really leverage those funds and, and it's hard to take that out of our budget when we can take that and multiply it by at least fifty percent or more. And so.
No, that makes total sense, my friend. That, that's really where we are. Just come and present all the different options and really find a way to stay within the original budget. And I think that's what you have selected here and lets us know how to do this. And with that, if that is the final recommendation when we decide here in a minute, then we'll have this project ready to bid. In the next few weeks, it'll be submitted and be in the paper by December and we'll have, we'll know where this on the contractor on board in January, so.
But I guess we could entertain motion to, to, for one of those options so that they have clarity and push direction to go. Would we move with option one?
And, and just for clarification, cause I screwed up. Option one, they have it shown on the spreadsheets, not, it's shown on the, would actually be option two on this sheet.
I think option one is shown on the spreadsheet.
And, and I just want to make sure that we're all on the same, in essence, what that does, builds the projects, US forty. And it restripes the intersection, they get it all lined up on the side. And that's really all that happens on north of forty is for the strike.
Yep, that's correct.
We have a motion in the second. It comes in the hall, on the paper.
Hi.
Any opposed?
Thank you. We got a good discussion, we got a good plan to lead forwards.
It was a big, it was a big decision.
Yeah, we appreciate you guys and all you're doing. I see you working up, working hard out there, we appreciate.
Yes.
We'll make Larry happy.
Thanks, guys.
Talk to you guys.
Appreciate it.
First of all, before you begin, Sunshine, I just have to say Sunshine and Rhonda's first election, it was, I, I think it was, I don't want to take away from any other sort of opinion here, but it was done very, very, very well. So, thank you for all the hard work and coming into it blindly, but you did amazing and appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you. Um, so what we have for you is basically a presentation, I think we're all pretty aware of the issues that came up during the election, but what I'll be presenting is a brief summary of the issues, another summary of kind of how we addressed them, and then a breakdown of disposition of ballots, uh, and, and how the votes were counted. So, if you're looking at this. So, car printing, subcontracted, we have a lot of our ballots. They have a problem with not having enough envelopes. Basically, that subcontractor, they did a job very well. They sent out return envelopes and instructions, but, you know, no ballots. Um, due to that shortage of envelopes, when the ballots were actually sent out, uh, there was no return envelope. So, that created a lot of confusion for a lot of our voters, frustration. And based on what I've said, I think that was one of the biggest problems, was the confusion that that created, less so than the delay in the ballots.
Uh, was there any, uh, cost to the city because of that?
No.
It's, they took care of it.
There was no additional printing, so it was additional labor on there. Printing, but the printer that they subcontracted out to simply did never open the box and send them. So, there was no additional printing or anything.
They had to have another stamp too, right?
Yeah, I mean, I guess there was, you know, that, but no, there was never any.
Did we pay the stamp or did they cover that?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure, if they screwed up, we shouldn't be
Yeah, there's no additional invoice, no additional payment from the city, everything was covered, either on the additional payment or it was just on uh, because it was the right thing to do.
You said we've used them before and not have problems with it because of the
Almost, almost exclusively, um, looking back through our, our invoices and even further, uh, we've been using car printing since the nineties.
Was this possibly because way more people were doing mail-in voting?
I mean, there's not really any way for me to know that, I just know what they said was, uh, supply chain issues with the envelopes is what prompted them to have to use a subcontractor. So, uh, to me, based on everything I was told, it sounds more like, uh, had they gotten their envelopes in time, and they were supposed to, they wouldn't have had to go to a subcontractor who, I'm assuming doesn't really do this kind of thing. Um, go to, oh, the solutions were already there, so obviously, um, cars sent out, they went and retrieved and then sent up the what was supposed to be sent out initially. Uh, we actually had somebody come down from the water source apartment and meet up with car printing and pick up additional envelopes and ballot, as well as original envelopes, so you know, we were made aware of the problem on Friday, and by Tuesday, we had, you know, we, we did have the materials in the office, people to come in and vote in person by following Tuesday, which in my mind is a pretty great turnaround. Um, and as soon as I was aware of the problem, even as it was developing, that's when I started focusing things on social media. You know, the first post was, hey, we're thinking there's an issue with the ballots, please let us know if you haven't received one. Quickly followed by, yes, we know there's a big issue now, here's what we're doing to address it. Uh, and then another update as we got more information. And those updates were shared with the media, I immediately reached out specifically to the radio. One of the quicker options for getting, uh, that information out. So, all of that was shared as quickly as possible, and within two days, I know, I was, uh, driving through the radio every day, and I heard, you know, I heard the updates, what I'd been putting out there. We're gonna keep going, I was happy with that. Any questions on that? This is where it gets fun for me, so, the number of forty-one ballots, um, that's how many should have been mailed out, unfortunately. Uh, was mailed, that number comes from, uh, a number of registered voters that would be received, um, from the county, so just real information. Um, registration is managed through an online portal that's run by the state, verified by the county that information is then disseminated to the states and to the municipalities, so it's kind of a weird, it feels like a little bit of a convoluted process to me, and I think that's kind of some issues, but uh, anyway, that, that two thousand eight hundred and forty-one is how many ballots were, were sent out, should have been sent out, and also reflects the number of registered voters. Um, you see return ballot and envelopes, seven hundred and sixty-two. The reason it says and envelopes as well is because when we were counting, uh, we encountered, there will be fourteen envelopes that uh, had a properly signed affidavit, they were ready to go, we opened them up, and there was I'm not sure if that was a statement or oversight, but we did get some empty ballot back. Um, of the ballots that were returned, we were able to count six hundred and sixty-eight of them. Uh, with ninety-four that were, for various reasons, on the other side, as you'll see, uh, were not able to be counted. An unknown disposition, that'd be one thousand seven hundred and three ballots. Uh, we don't know if they never made it to the right person, if they forgot, and then the person was chosen not to vote, if, if maybe they're addressing, we just don't know. We don't know where those one thousand seven hundred and three ballots. Is there any question, Ron?
The three hundred and ninety of the liberal came back.
Yes, those who were returned.
We, so we have twenty-four percent counted, is that normal for an op year? Do we know anything?
I really wish I knew, um.
I'm just curious if anyone
So, the data I have represented here is what I wish I knew about other elections. Um, looking back in our records, all I could really find was total number of votes counted. And so, I know total number of votes counted comparing it to the two previous election years. Um, one of them, we are within about, it is a pretty wide gap, about two hundred votes for one year, a year within, and five hundred for uh, the election year, so I think, you know, there is, uh, a difference. Um, let me go to the next slide. Okay, this breaks down our uncountable ballots, um, what, what I thought was really interesting, I know there's a a big concern, uh, about, you know, the timeframe and how that affected, uh, citizens' ability to vote by mail. Um, twenty-nine of the ballots were unable to be counted because the postmark was too late. I'd say code, I did not count anything that was postmarked after November first. So, those ones weren't able to be counted, but that leaves actually seventy percent of the ballots that we couldn't count were due to, uh, issues in my mind that come down to understanding of, uh, the voting process, whether that's not realizing that their signature has to be the same one that, uh, is on record at B N V, um, not registered to vote. Uh, uh, no affidavit, a lot of people actually, um, making struggles with the instructions on the envelope and tore off the affidavit. Once that's off, I can't verify the voter signatures, I'm not allowed to open the cabinet. And so, that, you know, that was the second largest issue we encountered. Uh, there was one duplicate ballot. And that's on a ballot that was verified by the county, not by me, um. So, basically, what I mean is, for most of these ballots, I took them down to the county, sat in front of their computer and verified the signatures. Um, that duplicate ballot, you see this, the gray bars, those are, um, numbers from our canvas count, so those were conducted after November second. And so, anything that was counted after November second, uh, that's where brought up, the county didn't verify, and I think so. So, I'm not sure how they determined that that ballot was duplicate. But they did make that determination, and then, um.
They keep a record over there, and they'll actually mark out that somebody has voted. You can actually, you can actually get on and look at that, and give an update of how many people have voted, who hasn't voted yet and things like that, anyway. Once they have somebody marked down that has voted, if they have another ballot that's been in that person's name, they'll maybe, it's time to just
Again, no worries, again, kind of a learning process. And then, in addition to those fourteen empty ballot envelopes, we got two that were returned just completely blank. So, they went through trouble filling out the affidavit, doing all that, marking it off. Uh, I, I don't remember if they were postmarked or not, but yes, they were returned to us quick, um. Can we go to the next slide? And this is just more, a little more information that I wish I had had in previous elections. This breaks down, um, the percentage of our ballots that were returned to our physical ballot box location versus going for mailing. So, uh, forty-five point seven percent were returned by mail. Fifty-three point, I'm sorry, fifty-four point three percent were dropped off in person. And then, our mayor ran on the votes, um, this is a little bit different than the slides I have for the other seats, but I thought the information was still interesting. Um, on election night, there were four hundred and sixty-seven counts for the mayor after our canvas count, that was five hundred and fifty-eight. Um, and about sixteen point five percent just did not abstain from voting on that. And so, once again, the, um, white bar would be the count that took place on election night, and then the gray is our, uh, canvas count. So, you can see there how the totals changed, uh, but the distribution stayed the same. And then, our, our last one is our two-year council, same thing. You know, the distribution stayed largely the same, uh, totals changed slightly. I don't know if there are any questions on this, um. If, at this point, you do have the option as, as council, obviously, as anybody who was on the ballot was saying, um, you have the option to recount the, the canvas votes, well, really all of them, if you like. We had, uh, Councilman loser bar, one of our election judges, Hal, available, we counted the canvas votes on November eleventh. So, it's up to you if you would like to recount those hundred and eleven votes, or if you'd like to, you know, if you feel that the work we did is sufficient and you'd like to just go ahead and approve this tally as being final.
First of all, I'd just like to thank you for all the work you went, I like numbers.
Okay.
Quite as good, I don't even spell it, but I do like numbers.
He was wanting to try and joke, I say maybe play one of those.
I like the information that we've given, and I'm glad that at least we have a, a standard uh, going forward of how to, like, keep that best, and just appreciate all the work.
Yeah, no, I'd like that, too, I'm ready to approve, but also want to acknowledge this great work staff did dealing with a really unfortunate situation. I think that a lot of the frustrations borne by the citizens were a whole over from the, the issue with the county election of previous year. Uh, you know, and so it, it was kind of a double whammy, but, no, great work to the staff and, you know, Don's team as far as getting the message out there and, and doing all they could, so, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, I mean, for all, I think for all three candidates, you know, it's appreciated a lot, just because you know, it's an unfortunate situation, it's discouraging for us. Sorry. Then it breaks for three candidates. I, I, I think that's great, too, that as well.
We've got a motion to
Yeah, I'll make that motion to approve the vote canvassing.
Wait a second.
I'll second it.
We have a same, my candidacy, white, on the paper.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks again for all your hard work, I appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you for calling me to be a part of the process, that's interesting.
Okay, we'll turn the time back over to you. She had, not only for all stories, but financial review tonight.
You'd be here, so. Okay, we will, um, there are two, two things in front of you that we've not discussed yet, um, we'll start with the fiscal year twenty-one budget update. Um, these are hopefully final numbers, there's been a lot of moving things around where they should be, um. But if you look at where we ended up with last year's budget, uh, revenues actually were five percent over what we had budgeted. And, um, a, a little over what we had the year before. Um, expenditures were about the same. Um, the last line I've gone there is, the six hundred and forty-two thousand that was not spent will be rolled over, and those funds will be appropriated for the budget that we have already approved this year, that is included in there. Um, CARES Act money, we stole a dollar. I moved things around, it was overspent, and, um, by the time I got done, I noticed that we have one dollar that's unspent, so we spent another dollar on our CARES fund to balance out there.
Road project.
I'll cover it.
Appreciate it.
We'll take some pebbles in there.
No conclusion, um. But pretty much you fell in line with what we had budgeted. Capital projects, capital projects, um, you know, we've been an interesting beast this year, um. We actually came in under the revenues that were brought in, part of that is road money. Um, as I'm learning how these processes go, there's a lot of the road monies, the B and C monies and what have you that we get from the state that if we can't account for having spent those, that they do need to roll over in the near few years, so, um. That is, is part of that, and there's some that was in the capital projects, and again, I'll get details of all of this to you as we get this finalized, but, um, some of that, because there were there were a lot of items that were told they could be covered by a CARES Act, and it was only so much CARES Act money, so that's why I tried to move things around to make them make sense, and so, we were able to put that into um, the budgeted projects and still come in under what we had for revenue, so. All in all, it's a good story. Water utility, um, ended up, um, a little under the budget, seventeen percent under the budget, um. Again, I've done a lot of rearranging how we were accounting for things. The water utility in historical past has split the bill for a lot of what's gone on in the city. And it felt right to me to have a better picture of exactly what each one of these funds were doing so that, that we can make better decisions, because if, if the numbers are skewed in one way or another, it's a little bit difficult to make decisions on things, so. Water utility will look much healthier in the coming year. Um, sewer utility, revenues were, um, seventy-seven percent of the budget and the, uh, expenses, or I'm sorry, uh, revenues were ninety percent of the budget and expenses were at ninety-two percent, so they ended up coming in pretty close on overall, about ninety-five percent of the budget. And sanitation fund, um, we actually do at this point in time generate a little bit of income for the city, for the sanitation, which I have to tell you, it's a lot of work to keep track of what's going on with the sanitation. It's, it's a lot for the city, we do all of the building, we do all of the collecting, all the risk is the cities, and so that was part of that increase that we asked for on, um, the commercial, um, garbage cans, um, the last one we brought to you, so. Um, unless you have any questions, that's basically where we plan to I, it looks like we will probably end up with fiscal year twenty-one. And then the second paper that you have there is a three sheet. That is for fiscal year twenty-two, this is showing you everything up through, uh, P one. So, it's twenty-five of the fiscal, twenty-five percent of the fiscal year, um, expired. We are at twenty-three percent of our budgeted revenues, and these, these percents used are based on the nine twenty-one numbers that I used, they're already approved. The others are just showing you the, the new budget numbers that were approved tonight. Um, and the expenditures were at twenty-seven percent, so pretty close on track. None of the ARPA funds have actually been spent at this point in time, um. And, um, we've seen very little movement on the debt service at this point. Capital projects, um, not a lot has happened with capital projects either. The water utility revenues are at thirty percent, which is a good number, and operating expenses are at sixteen percent, so.
Which is why we stole money from there before.
Absolutely, yes, yes. Brian had the pockets, so.
I gave him a thumbs up before, like, they're gonna get you, yeah.
And then sewer utility, uh, the revenues are at twenty-one percent, operating spends are at sixteen percent of the budget at this point, and sanitation fund is
All even.
Yeah. Any questions?
Do we have, I just got one on the power power or cares or whatever.
Uh huh.
Do we have another job coming that we received all work?
We'll get it next year.
Next year, yeah. When does it have to be spent? I know we've talked about things for it, I'm not trying to earmark it any upstairs.
Yeah, we have until um twenty twenty-four, I believe. Um, most of this, well, not most, but a good portion of this first, we have already earmarked for. The safety equipment and like, we've got the water tank, we're choosing part of that, and.
So I know it's near the equipment on the chat some.
Yes, yes, that's, that's a lot of that, that's already earmarked, but it's part of the money, and we'll get our firemen here and go properly, which is gonna be a good thing for them. Any questions?
Thank you. Well, I just had one, on the uh revenue for the twenty twenty-two, we were at twenty-three percent. I know sometimes we get sales tax coming in, does that account, are we, does that reflect the sales tax that we would have accumulated up to that point? Or is there anything?
Yeah, but it's also within taxes, I mean, so what is in our taxes, not only our sales taxes, it's property tax, prior year, current year, those types of things. And so you'll see fluctuations, you'll see that go up quite a bit for property tax after the property tax becomes uh due for the for the current year, or you know, that type of thing. But it also included in that is we have highway taxes, we have um what they call a zap tax, which is a zoo tax, um lots of different taxes that then we just get an automatic deposit into our account. Then I just take those numbers and hold those floors, and that's what funds that need to be adjusted.
It it looks like for right on course for the most part, did you have any concerns on any?
I really don't at this point in time. We, I think, I think I feel still pretty confident about the budget. We didn't try to make it so lean that we were gonna have to be putting in asking to open it like we've been to make it often. And yet it's lean enough that when we have expenses like at at the aquatic center for nine thousand dollars for these lights, it was like, okay, we really have to open things back up. We don't have that kind of excess in there, but um again, kudos to these guys, they're very good at checking how much they have in their budget, are they gonna stay within their budget? And so I I have very little concerns that that um we can keep ourselves within budget and not have to dip into what we've done considering the different contracts.
And I saw purchase orders for them as well, are there any questions on those?
Uh, that's my number.
So then we're gonna make a motion to approve?
I'm moving approve.
I'll second that.
Second by council, in favor, in our favor.
Aye.
Any votes?
I do have to say, I really like how we're getting the purchase orders, the 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 financials, because I can see what things are, and if I have a question, I ask Ron, but it's a nice format, then we just get the white sheet and have to. I always have lots of questions, now I have less, because I see what's going on, so thank you for that, Ron.
City manager report.
So, quick items for council tonight. First thing I did want to mention, we did have a successful trick-or-treating downtown, if you did not see that. The city was not in charge of that.
Lorie Hurley, I'm gonna go, she's the one that's been doing that, because the Chamber of Commerce hasn't, she's kind of had that up, so if you see.
This year as well.
She did, Lorie Hurley, you see her, please let her know, and I'm gonna go first, because she's, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's perfect, and I'm glad you mentioned her name, because I had forgotten to lock it up here, but please thank her, because that event is huge for our community. And I can tell you, I've been participating in ours and participating in one in Merle, ours is much better. It included our businesses a lot more, really was a better community event, just all around. And on that note as well, I also want to thank our firemen, our police department, they did a really good job of making sure those kids are safe crossing that busy road, so I think that they helped a lot. Please thank this Hurley, correct, it's Hurley, because she was phenomenal for for heading it up. Second thing, I know we mentioned this briefly, but I want to thank you for the intern program. It really is a great program that helps a lot. I'm not sure if you're aware, but I actually started in the government sector, being an intern for the city. And so it's a program I feel strongly about, we can do a lot of good, and like with Lorenzo, we like to give him a little bit of everything in the city, give him a little taste of different things, including presenting to council. So thank you for that, and thank you, Councilman Lou Zunbar, for helping us find him and for our future ones. Final thing, last meeting, we did have a concerned citizen with regards to engine brakes in the city. I did research, and we do have ordinance in place currently that restricts all engine brakes in the city. So I'm informing the US Council, I'll reach out to that individual as well, let them know, and make sure our police department is aware of this situation by their house. But I did want to update council, let you know that we do have ordinance in place.
I do know that there is a sign on, I'm not sure which road, I thought there was one on two hundred north, somewhere at the villa or Viola, but I I drove there just.
Yeah, I didn't.
I didn't find it, but on the road, what's what's the road that goes up and over the hill?
She left two hundred north.
There is a sign right there on the top of that hill, coming into town.
And maybe we need to put one on the way along.
Highway coming down.
What does this sign say? Does it say that we enforce that rule?
That engine brakes restricted, and then I had some other people.
They're kind of saying they are great to have as people handled, yeah. So I can work with her to make sure that we have.
Not sure on the other road, it's coming in the town.
I think it's great if we can enforce them, but of course, um, it's good for it to be clearly marked, so that there's no, you know.
There's no gotcha.
Yeah, there's no.
That's probably important. Any questions for me? Great for Mark. Thank you for following up with that. I mentioned it today in our meeting, and he's like, yep, I already figured it out. Actually, he um asked if this items for future discussion be on our agenda, which I think is a good idea, and that was through the thought of, hey, did we do that? And he's like, yeah, I worked on it. Appreciate you just follow up.
We had a a patron two months ago come in about the garbage, uh did we ever address that one?
Oh, the the cost of the garbage.
Because he was only taking it like once a month out.
Right, and why explain that individual, that is a policy decision, and we need to discuss that in our legal meeting. It is something that can be done, and well, the council, administratively, we can't make that change, but. Yeah, so I guess that's a great question, especially for items of future discussion. Is that something you would like us to go back and draft something, obviously you can't vote tonight, but to present to council as a consideration?
My thought is that how do we track that up? Does K and K have to keep notes on that for us, or, I mean, because we just have to go by his word and just charge him for once a month or something, but if we do that, then we open up a big problem possibly.
There are a lot of logistical challenges with that. But I'll be honest, the first thing I would do, if you would like me to research that, is I would reach out to other communities. A lot of the problems have been tackled, because I see a lot of headaches with this one, but it doesn't mean that there isn't a solution out there.
Yeah, I didn't, and and I'm not, I I'm just curious, because I know the patron came in, and I just want to make sure we we're at least doing what we can to see if there's an option, and maybe if you, I I think for me, if you just reach out to other communities, see if anyone's dealing with that, I don't know that we need to have anything presented yet, but maybe if you could just let us know, kind of, if if other, how other communities are talking to us, if they are. Um, and if they're not, or if they can't, like I said, I understand the logistics, and I, you know, I understand that part of it.
The question I would have too is sometimes you just look and see if it's a, if it's a common problem, or if it's just isolated too, so.
Yeah, I want, I wonder if he could just, like, is it an option to get rid of the garbage can? And K and K not come by, and he'd just be responsible to take his garbage once a month to K and K or something, I mean, I don't know, and.
Well, I would, I would say, you know, before we change the policy, let's see if it's a.
Yeah, I have to say.
It's just capital.
Yeah, anyway, I didn't want that one to go. Um, also, uh, question about the House, we're meeting with Grant on the.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second. Um, where are we in the process, are we just starting to research? Because I, my, my question is, is if we put some policy in place, or ordinance, or whatever, can we then enforce it on this, or we'd have to wait?
I think we need to put one in place, it'll be using stuff, enforcing stuff that we already have.
Okay.
And I was gonna follow up with you after the meeting, and like you know, we talked about it this morning, and they're planning to meet here at two o'clock.
Right, I, and I live right there, I'll just meet you over at the house at two, two o'clock or whatever, but I'm, I, that's not a problem. Like I said, I'm, I'm concerned not just for that house, I'm concerned for our community if something like that happened again, because I know Ryan mentioned one that was south, I believe, that was about two years before it was dealt with. Another one took like a year, year and a half, and to me, that's not a reasonable amount of time to deal with something like.
I don't think I agree with you on that.
Okay.
Through the process, there kind of has to be that time period where they're given the opportunity to address it themselves before we come in on.
So, but a year and a half is still, so I would, I would think six months to a year, to me, would be reasonable.
Well, I think six months is what it's, it's gonna take at least that long for us, once we start the process. So I think the timeline's slow on the.
No, I I understand that.
Private property, right? It's not something that we just go straight in and.
Right, no, I understand that, and I'm not trying to take away property, it just seems like, th- this one's over, a little over two years now, so, you know, it's two years and a month, whatever, to me, that's too long. Personally, I think a year at least would seem more reasonable to me, but, you know, I don't know all the laws, that's why we have you to help out with that, but.
One of the things that I suggested this morning here that was rejected, and I don't, I'm still not exactly clear why, but it's just to finish the job, you know, with the fire department, and Ryan though. I don't know.
I, I, yeah, I've talked to Ryan about that, it'd be great practice for the fire department.
Yeah, you know, it's, and now I, I can, I understand your frustration, there was, the phone that you're talking about was close to, um, can't remember the former councilman's name at the moment. But he was really frustrated about it too, you know, we worked on that one in, you gotta call him, that's, you're right, thank you. Um, but it's the process, it it just, because there's there's insurances involved, there are probably links from the bank, and just so many different things involved to get through all of that. It's, it's, it's hard.
I understand, I just would like to see if there's some way we could get a little, I mean, two years is too long to me. I think, my own opinion, a year seems more reasonable, year and a half maybe, but again, I don't know all the laws and legalities, and I don't want to take away rights anyone, and I understand there's other entities involved, but. It it's still frustrating, and like I said, it's been over two years and nothing's happened, you know, and to me, that's a problem, and we contacted, uh, what I understand, whoever's involved, and and nothing's happened, and they've just left it there. And that, that to me, it's a problem, because you get, end up with transients, you end up with kids that could end up, you could end up with another fire, people get in there and and do things, there's uh animals that get in, you know. There, I just see it as a, it's, it's a problem for that, that, you know, area right there, and so I I see health issues and other, but that's just my own opinion.
So I got a question, is there a way we could put in like laws that require or, you know, action within a certain amount of time? Or is there a way that we can put, put pressure on people to respond and to, and to resolve these things by within deadlines, or even send a letter that says you have forty-five days or else?
Probably not that we can do forty-five days, but there are laws already in place that do that. I don't know if they've really been used in this one, the one down south of town, I know that they were in court five or six times, I think at least, resolved, I've never had this one in court. So I think there are things that could be done, put additional pressure on the property owner, I'm not sure that it would have made any difference in this one. Um, it, but it, I don't, it, for my perspective, I guess it's totally different than Dawn's. When we're looking at the value of real property and what people have to do to get it cleaned up, I don't think two years is an unreasonable time period to give somebody an opportunity to address it before we sit in, even on the commercial property that we had over here in the old, the one south of the grill, I don't remember what it was called before. But we had to step in and put pressure on them too, and even with that type of a property owner, it still takes quite a bit of time. It takes a lot of money for somebody to be able to clear something like that up, and especially if the insurance isn't doing that. And so what we're doing is a pretty extreme measure, and I would be very, very conscious about doing this kind of thing without giving the people ample opportunity to take care of it themselves. And I know that you're frustrated about it, Dawn, but to be perfectly honest, I'm a little bit nervous that we may be going too fast, not too slow.
Well, I guess, I guess where I disagree is the one you were talking about before, there was, there was court issues, there, I mean, you went to court, there was discussion, there was some action, some promise, something going on. There's nothing going on in this one, I mean, no, you said it hasn't gone to court, there's been no action at the house, nothing, I mean, not even a for sale sign to say, hey, I'm trying to get rid of the property, I mean, nothing's been done, period. To me, two years of nothing is not reasonable. I think if, if I see action within, you know, six months, a year, year and a half, that they're trying to do something, I don't have a problem with that. I know things take time and money and stuff to do, and if I see there's progress, I could say, yeah, we can, you know, and and I don't have a problem if, if we do something in terms of an ordinance that we include that. Because I do want to be fair and give people time, but when nothing's been done for two years, I mean, not one thing, other than we boarding up, the the city boarding it up to make sure, try to keep kids out, and even then, they were torn off once, and we had to do it again. To me, that's the problem.
Well, we can talk to Mark Allen about that on next Monday. Mark wasn't around for a lot of that, and I don't know the reasons why there was less, less action taken by the police department on this one than the other one. And so there are a few things we can do there, but for stepping in and doing what we're planning now, I think.
And I would, and I would defer to you, Grant, I'm not trying, I don't want to get the city in trouble or anything.
Let's do this because I, because in the sake of time, uh, honestly, twenty-second we'll go look at it, the process is started now. I know there's frustration in the white and the men, but this point, it, we are where we're at now, on the twenty-second we'll go look at it, and we'll pursue it, pursue it to this point. Do you have anything on sports?
Nope.
Okay, so if you're standing up there like.
Sorry, John.
Yeah, quickly, because.
I just, so when I mentioned that, is there something we can do to require things to move forward, like forty-five day letters and stuff like that, it was, I was thinking about getting the insurance companies to cooperate and things like that. I wasn't actually thinking of forcing people to to tear down houses and stuff within a certain amount of time. I was thinking, can we move the process along by by having laws and things in place to require?
And and I want this, oh, sorry.
There's not a law we can do as a third party directly with the insurance company, the the party that we deal with is the property owner, and it would be just like them.
Okay.
I think what we need to do is just as a city, have our own policy put in place of how we handle that, and the, and the timeframe and, you know, benchmarks that we hit at certain times uh to deal with that process. I think that would, along, we can do that in for upcoming ones.
And I'm okay with that, like I said, I don't want to.
Call it.
But I still think something, rather than nothing being done, something needs to be done, so. I don't have a committee report, I'll help you move along, so.
That's can be, have anything for us tonight.
I do, I had the board meeting yesterday, ULCT, the most important things, they've been, the legislature have been trying to figure out ways to go away from the fifty-fifty CARES Act distribution. Um, ULCT has been really fighting not let that happen. They, they went and explained, what is your, what are you trying to accomplish by this? And basically, going away from the fifty-fifty makes it so there are some cities that will get a lot more money and others will get less. But they did say that they think they're, it's kind of going over the cliff. But they did say that they think they're, it's kinda going over the cliff, but it's not there yet. The, the plans to change that. One big thing is because they want to do, um. They want to do, um. Well, I wrote it here somewhere. But because part of, part of what they're trying to do is already being accomplished because so many people are using the internet and buying stuff from home. Which then makes the point of saving home, which brings more set of tax to the cities because of that. So.
Are they doing that? They've already done that somewhat through, this is like Amazon and things like that. They've tried to do that with.
No, everybody, I guess, has adopted it, but it's coming. Um, so, so that was one big discussion with that. And hopefully they're gonna keep fifty-fifty like it has been. The, the other thing, um, doesn't really affect smaller areas, rural areas. But there, one of the bills in the legislature was to prohibit, um, tax incentives on retail property. Um, and this was, this was probably the biggest discussion of the night, of the day. But, um, there, in bigger cities, this is gonna, this is already gonna happen. They, unless you meet certain criteria with, with what you're doing, you cannot give incentives to a business to come in to your town. Or city and deal, which a lot of times.
Is that just tax incentives?
Yeah. But the, the reason is because they're saying it's not fair, but, but the whole reason behind this is not retail. It's, uh, housing. And so they're tying, if you're gonna give somebody a business incentive, then you're gonna have a housing component and a bunch of other stuff. Go along with that. Um, I think we just have to be aware of it because they say right now that rural areas, we don't. We're not, don't have to meet these criteria, but if they get it in place for the big ones, then it'll trickle down and, and so we just have to be. But those were the two big things and hopefully they've got under control. Uh, there was a representative there from the, from the state. And, um, he wanted to get the league's take on it and, and that was the people. I'm pretty happy. He's, hey, he said, I understand, but this is what we're working with and I'm not gonna be able to change it. We just wanted your input. So. We just need to be, keep track of that and hopefully. Hopefully it will not affect us negatively in the short term anyway. That's all.
Thank you, Councilman White. Appreciate you being on that committee. Not only you're a voting member, I like you, right? And also bring, bring that information back to us. Appreciate you. Uh, Councilman Barrett.
Um, I don't have anything in particular other than in December's agenda, uh, we'd like to explore the idea of, of doing a, a special recreation district. What would be entailed? So I think that'd be a little bit of, just kind of heads up for, for everyone here that's, that would play a part in that discussion. Cody Ellen and I have had a discussion about wanting to start something like that. So.
Um, are you wanting staff to be prepared to present stuff to you?
Um, no, I think more than anything, we want to know the legalities and kind of what the boundaries we try to target and stuff like that.
Just for creation of?
Creation of a special service district. We'd want to include me, as Cody and I talked, and I don't know, hopefully you're comfortable with me bringing this up right now. Yeah. We talked about maybe from like Bridgeland to, uh, Mighton up to Neola and, and then basically a circle there. Just to kind of include the immediate, immediate area around the city within that. I know it would include two different counties and stuff, but. Be great to, to explore that possibility and see what, if it's even something we can do and what would be required for us to go ahead and move forward with that. So.
Have you guys familiar with the, around already?
I remember it was.
Is it, you want something similar?
We have talked about this in, in our meeting a few different times, bringing that up too. And knowing that Altamont has just got together. And so it's definitely something that.
Yeah.
I think you'll have the staff support. We've already been asking our department heads, especially those that deal with recreation. To figure out how much of their participation is Roosevelt City residents, how much is outside Roosevelt City residents? And really what the, the, and the reason, the only reason I'm bringing it up is because I want to make sure that. We want to make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row when we present this and when we start talking about this, because it is gonna open up a can of worms with not only Roosevelt. Roosevelt City residents, I think, it can go either way. What we're gonna end up doing is giving up some control, right? Of, of our amenities, our facilities, because of board, then it's, a board that's over that special district will then be in charge. Pretty much of the decision-making, uh, of those. So that's one, one hurdle we gotta overcome. The other hurdle we gotta overcome. Is being able to have the data to show the benefit to the surrounding areas and what they're currently benefiting. Again, another thing we talked about too is if we can't be a special service, service district, um, do we charge a higher rate to the, to the city residents? And so we're trying to, just so I, I just bring that up so the, the councilmen know what's being done behind the scenes. Cause that is, that has been an idea that's, that we've been looking at for several months. And so I think, I think it might be a good idea to talk in December. I don't know where we're at with all our data and things like that. The legalities of it, I think, it is definitely a doable thing on the side of.
Maybe just bring some ideas to the table for the council. I mean, we get to just bring ideas like how we'd want to structure that and what kind of benefit, how we'd want to do the. You know, what kind of revenue we'd want to make so that we can provide whatever services we want to provide and, anyway. So it's time to move forward on that one. I'd, I'd love to see it happen, but of course it's, it would be up for a vote by the people, right? That would be within the district. So, so that would be, but people.
If it's gonna be a taxi.
Which I think it would be.
That would be the whole point of bringing me in. If it's gonna be coming by the city and then just give representation with that station, that's kind of a, that'd be really good for them. No, we do that. Thanks, Councilman Barrett. Um, I don't have any room to report, but then we're just waiting on a few grants to come through on a few projects.
I'll not be in report. I don't have anything.
Okay. Um, seeing nothing else. Um, we don't need closed session?
Nope.
Thank goodness.
Our next meeting is the twenty-first. Is that correct?
All right.
You're not. It's time for twenty-first.
They, they wish you to adjourn.
I'll make a motion for that.
You have a motion?
I'm just saying my time's up.
I'll be there.
All right.